Right when you are, Mr. Chair.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the August 9th meeting of the Select Board. We apologize for the delay. We are experiencing some technical difficulties. We will open the meeting with a roll call or a call to order and a roll call.
Daniel A. 334 Old Conker Turnpike.
Dan Mantra, Free Scruton Bond Road.
George Bailey Chesley Drive.
Jim Skosia, 21 James Henry Drive.
Andrew Knapp, Lenzy Point Road.
If everyone would please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for review and approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any adjustments or anything that they would like to make to it? Select person here.
I present old business from last week.
What would you like to add to old business?
Lot 247, map, map, 247 lots 11 and 20.
Do you want to vote on it?
Does anybody have any argument with adding map 247 lots 11 and 20 to the old business section?
I don't, I don't.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda review with Dan's addition.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Air I, man sure got it.
Bailey I.
Skosia.
Napa. That will be D under old business.
Very good. Yes, sir. Public hearing issuance of a building permit on Long Shores Drive, a private road for lot Haggerty?
Map 102. Luan Haggerty.
Luan Haggerty, map 102 lot 77. The only comment that I had in time reviewing it is that it specifies it as a two-bedroom septic, but the plan that we received is for a three-bedroom. So I don't really know how that plays out.
Well, that could be something as far as like, okay, we just added a closet in that in that room. Now it's considered a bedroom. I mean, there's this stuff that that can happen too. So I don't know. I would think that with not having the correct paperwork match up between two and three, I don't think that we can pass a little bit of people.
If we look at the housing, excuse me, may I speak?
I'm sorry.
Forgive me. The plan they submitted on the House 26 by, initiate by 38, it shows it's going to be for three bedrooms. Plan they submitted to us on the end. And secondly, the plan they submitted was for the septic system, but there is no plot plan here because as annotated on the plan from the septic system, it says this is not to be used as a septic plan only and not to be considered as part of the plot plan.
Right. It also specifies it's proposed as a two-bedroom home and the plan we have is for a three-bedroom.
That's correct.
And Mr. Chair, I'll draw the board's attention to II under the public hearing A, which is a note that indicated last week when I finalized this report, we had indicated the requirement of a certified plot plan as a lot less than an acre. We hadn't received it at that point. We still have not received it. And so it's certainly the board's discretion if they're interested in reviewing the issuance of that the building permit, authorizing the issuance prior to that. The it's required, the building inspector would require that certified plot plan prior to issuing the building permit anyways. So the board could consider it and make a decision conditioned on that. Or if the board would like to be able to review that information and/or ask a follow-up question about the septic system and number of bedrooms, then you could table this to the next meeting.
My select question, Skosia, you didn't.
I was just gonna ask the same thing. You just threw it at the end. So.
So my general feeling on it is I would like to ask some clarifying requests of them, some clarifying answers on the questions regarding the septic versus the approved design, the building design that we got, that we received and also the certified plot plan. Select person Bailey.
I'd like to make a motion for continuance of map 102 lot 77. Provide us with the necessary information as noted by the chair. Also to include a certified plot plan, also to include an update on the plan because it shows a two-bedroom versus a three. Did I forget anything?
Nope.
That's what we've covered. Thank you.
Second. Roll call.
Air I, man sure got it.
Bailey I.
Skosia.
Napa. So we did not issue the building permit and continue it at this point for lot 77. Perfect. Sorry, I'm just updating my paperwork. The consent agenda. Select person Mantra.
Yeah, just a question. It's supposed to be a public hearing, right?
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. I did not. Do we need to open a public hearing if we didn't, if we didn't, we're not agreeing to issue?
My recommendation would be to see if anybody did come on to make a comment about the application. I think since it was continued, the requirement to have the hearing could be satisfied at the next meeting. But I would recommend opening.
Well, I will back up to that issuance of the building permit for lots, map 102 lot 77. And I will open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone that would like to speak on it?
If you're participating remotely, you can raise your hand or press star six to unmute yourself and speak up and wait to be called on by the chair. There's also chat feature that you can enter in a comment to let us know that you're interested in.
Thank you.
Last chance. If you're in the meeting remotely and you'd like to make a comment, you can raise your hand or press star six to unmute yourself. Speak up. I don't see anything coming through my, Mr. Chair.
All right. I will close public comment at this time. I asked the board to revote on the issuing of a continuance for map 102 lot 77, if you would please, just to make it official based on our my lack of getting the agenda right here.
In water, air I, man sure got it.
Bailey I.
Skosia.
Napa. Okay. So we've reaffirmed that. Consent agenda. Are there any? I think post-public. Did I not? I'm sorry. I apparently I'm losing. And I will close the public hearing at this time.
Want to start again?
No, no, I thought I did close it, but if I didn't, I.
Either way.
Thanks. This, we have a nice chair for it. Let's try this one again. Third time's the charm. Consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to change on the consent agenda or raise off the consent agenda? Select person Mantra.
Oh, I don't, I don't want to change the consent agenda, but I wish we'd be able to read publicly the the two Eagle Scout proclamations.
Absolutely. We can do that on.
Staff reports?
No, we can do it. I would do it right.
Right on the consent agenda.
Vote on the consent agenda and then read them at that time.
I know that we group consent agenda.
Oh, second.
Okay, added.
Roll call though.
Air I, man sure got it.
Bailey.
Skosia, Napa. And at this time, I will give a homage to our two Eagle Scouts. As long as I can find my paperwork here.
We'll give them a standard elevation.
Now I'll just read it. I got it right here. All right. You have to be more formal.
Well, these are the ones they're gonna actually get. I'll just use this right now.
Philly?
Yes.
So Liam Philly in a proclamation, whereas during his time as with the Boy Scouts of America, Liam Philly has earned many awards and badges attaining increasing levels of responsibility. And whereas Liam Philly successfully completed several service projects, including for his Eagle Scout project, the building and installation of a patio under the pavilion at Barrington Elementary School, improving an outdoor area for students, staff and visitors. And whereas the distinction of Eagle Scout is a title earned through a Boy Scouts tenure, an extraordinary effort. Liam Philly of Troop 358 Boy Scouts of America did in fact fulfill all requirements for the distinction and in doing so demonstrated the necessary personal and technical qualities to be awarded the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas on behalf of the entire Select Board, I want to congratulate Liam Philly for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout on April 28, 2021. Now therefore we, the Barrington, New Hampshire Select Board do recognize the accomplishments of Liam Philly and urge all citizens to join us in congratulating him on achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. In witness thereof, we have here unto our hand and cause the seal of the town of Barrington to be affixed this ninth day of August 2021. And.
Chair, do you sign it now?
We do have copies to be signed now. Yes. So congratulations to Liam Philly. The next proclamation is for Ethan Frankenwitz.
Frankelwitz.
Frankenwitz. And it is a proclamation, whereas during his time with the Boy Scouts of America, Ethan Frankenwitz has earned many awards and badges attaining increasing levels of responsibility. And whereas Ethan Frankenwitz successfully completed several service projects, including for his Eagle Scout project, the building and installation of a walkway and planting of flowers at the Barrington Historical Society, beautifying and providing a safe passageway for visitors. And whereas the distinction of Eagle Scout is a title earned through the Boy Scouts tenure and extraordinary effort, Ethan Frankenwitz of Troop 358 Boy Scouts of America did in fact fulfill all requirements for this distinction and in doing so demonstrated the necessary personal and technical qualities to be awarded the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas on behalf of the entire Select Board, I want to congratulate Ethan Frankenwitz on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout on this June 2nd, 2021. Now therefore we, the Barrington Select Board, the Barrington, New Hampshire Select Board do recognize the accomplishment of Ethan Frankenwitz and urge all citizens to join us in congratulating him on achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. In witness thereof, we have here unto our hand and cause the seal of the town of Barrington to be affixed this ninth day of August 2021. So congratulations, Ethan Frankenwitz. Appointments. Jack Gale to the Conservation Committee. Is there anything that we need to enter non-public to discuss?
Nope.
Select person.
I make a motion.
So a motion to appoint Jack Gale.
Mr. Chair. I, this is the first appointment since the board adopted the appointment procedure. And so per the appointment procedure, the Select Board has indicated that they'll review candidates at two consecutive meetings. The first meeting just for discussion and in the second meeting for a vote. Now, that doesn't mean that at any time the board can't waive that procedure and make an appointment in one meeting. And in this case, Mr. Gale has been a serving member of the Trails Committee. It isn't a new applicant. Part of the purpose of having the two consecutive meetings is to give the chair of the committee and the committee itself an opportunity to review the application and can wager a recommendation if they so wish. In this case, he was actually recommended through the Conservation Commission Chair. So if you do choose to vote on it tonight, I think that's fantastic. I would recommend waiving the appointment procedure and proceeding.
I got hands all over the place and I don't know which one was first.
Go ahead.
Well, is it down on that end or was it?
I couldn't see that with.
It doesn't matter. I think we're all trying to accomplish the same goal.
Like the way the requirement of two meetings.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Do I, select person there had made a recommendation to.
For the mission, he's been active as of every meeting and stuff.
Yep.
So that's why I scored it.
Okay, so I have a motion from select person there.
Second.
Okay, you have a second from select person Skosia. Roll call though.
Air I, man sure got it.
Bailey I.
Skosia.
Napa. This time I will open the first of two public comments. As a reminder, topics are limited to our agenda items and if there is and will be limited to, further limited to 15 minutes of discussions. If you would like to make a public comment, please unmute yourself by pressing star six and raising it or raise and raising your hand in the chat feature.
For those folks participating on a phone, if you're muted, you can star six. I see that there's a phone participant ending in 6827. If you've unmuted yourself to make a public comment, speak up. Let us know your name.
Seeing no public comments coming through at this point in time.
I see none.
I will close the public comments section. Staff reports.
Thank you. Two items for you. First, the first meeting in August here, I'd like to read through the August work anniversary of which there are a few. First, in order of tenure, our Highway Department crew member Jerry Caleb has worked for the town for 34 years this month. Chief Richard Conway, former police chief, current supervisor in the Recreation Department, has also been with the town for 34 years. Little bit of a jump down to Michael Bayer, who's one of our EMS providers for 11 years. Keith Brody, who is fire and EMS for 10 years. Patrice Lenzi, who is the minute taker for the Conservation Commission, has worked for the town for nine years. Michelle Libby, formerly Cludier, as a police officer and is celebrating her five-year work anniversary with the town. Jessica Buzzwell, EMS for the town of Barrington for five years. Amanda Noyes, who started as our building administrative assistant and a few years ago took on the duties and responsibilities of assessing, has worked for the town for four years. Shane Elliott, the Highway Department crew member, has worked for the town for four years. Jamison Young, a police officer, was hired three years ago this month. I, your town administrator, joined the town three years ago this month as well. The road agent joined the town two years ago this month, Mark Morrow. Autumn Smith joined the library as a desk clerk two years ago this month. Kaylee Downs started working with the town as fire and EMS two years ago this month. And finally Francis McGuire joined the fire department as firefighter EMS one year ago this month. So certainly appreciate the tenure of those employees before the many more years. The second item I have is more just a community announcement. Also wanted to make sure the board was aware as well. The Recreation Department has a couple of slides from the last playground when it was disassembled, but still have useful life left in them. They followed the disposal policy, offered them to the schools, to other departments, other communities in the area. Nobody had any interest in them. So following the disposal policy, we've started a sealed bid process for the two slides. We do expect that there has been a lot of community interest in the slides. So you have a flyer in your packet that's also available on the town's website.
Andy's gonna be bidding on it first part two.
I'd like to see the tune race on that, on that.
I bet the fire department needed them to get from the second floor down to the first.
Yeah, we didn't need that elevator back in 99. Who's kidding?
We can use this to get a UTV and a truck.
Little ratchet strap buckle on the bottom. So anyways, the deadline to submit bids, as I understand, there's a lot of board interest, is noon on August 23rd. And those will come to the Select Board meeting on the 23rd to be awarded presumably to the high bidder.
Is there a place where interesting parties may view them?
They're available at the Recreation Department. We ask that you contact the Recreation Department with the director, Jessica Tennis, if you'd like to arrange a visit.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Try it out.
Thinking about it.
Well, we need, it needs to be during business hours for legal.
Municipal Office Administrator Connell.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
All right. Old Business Cost of Living Adjustment Methodology. So I know I went through this and my question out of it was trying to circle back to, what are, I want to make sure I understand what the town administrator is proposing as the recommendation.
Absolutely. So I think it summarized most efficiently in the 11 by 14 page that I provided with the historical data. So the proposal, the methodology, at its core, what the methodology does is it takes a few different data points that are regularly issued. We know when they're going to be issued. We know how we'll be able to integrate that into the budget development process. It uses both the Consumer Price Index with multiple data levels. You know, different. One more discrete, one more broad, and then the Social Security, if any, Cost of Living Adjustment, which is issued every year in October. So the two, the two proposals at the bottom show that what the difference would be in using the Northeast or the New England as the larger region for a data point. So up top you'll see that there's the CPI for the Northeast, which includes, you know, Connecticut, New York. The Consumer Price Index for New England, which is more central to New Hampshire and where we are in Barrington. Consumer Price Index for Boston. We could certainly use all three. I would recommend using two. You can see in the data how the two have trended over the years. It seems like the New England CPI has been more in line with the Boston CPI. So, you know, closer to our region. So I think that that would be, if I were going to recommend between the two, that's what I would recommend. And the methodology itself takes those known quantities, calculates them each year in October to determine what the cost of living adjustment, if any, would be for the following year to take place in April. And so the only additional point that I'll make is that the, you know, the town in 2019 into 2020, when the town invested in the compensation study, a large part of the reasoning that the pay plan had fallen so far behind being competitive was not, not issuing increases, merit-based wage increases, steps for employees, but not keeping the pay plan current with inflation. And so obviously that's the goal of a cost of living methodology, cost of living adjustment. And after last year's process, the board recommended a specific methodology with data point that could be agreed on ahead of time before we started the budget process. So that's the goal. I think this balances the various needs and I'm happy to answer any questions.
If you wouldn't mind refreshing me on how, what the percents are with a step in a grade.
Typically, yep. So with the town pay plan, each step is 2.5%. With the union pay plan, it's 3.75%. And that's based on calculated range spread from the first step in the grade to the last step in the grade. We were previously at 22% and the target from our the target from the compensation study in the comparable communities was closer to 38%, which is what we achieved in the new paper.
So if you, if you're achieving your step in your grade, the grade is the same. We're lumping this all in as one as the step and the grade is.
No, so the grade is, is what, the grade is assigned to a position.
Right.
So there's grades one through 15. Each position has a grade with 13 steps within it. And so when we established the pay plan, we said, listen, a truck driver laborer is a grade seven. Starting out, that work is worth this to us and it's, the most it's worth is step 13. And so the idea is, once you, once a position reaches the top of the grade, you know, there's no more progression.
So every year we are, we are giving a two and a half percent increase or a 3.75% increase.
If a step is approved during the budget process, which is a, is separate consideration.
Which, which I think has only not happened one time in the six years or seven years that I know of. And even before that, the only time it didn't happen was in the prior economic recession.
Yeah, I mean, the town went a period of eight years. Looking at our longer tenure employees in the back of the room, the town went a period of eight years with no step increases, no wage increases at all. And so recent history has been different.
That would have been quite a long cycle if I stand corrected. So right around the economic recession of between seven and nine or seven and 10. Select person Mantra.
Yeah. If this is done in October, how will the department heads figure that into their budget request? Which start, will be prepared in September. Will they then reflect that as we go through or?
It's a great question. And so the, the budget development process starts with department heads determining what they need to request for all lines other than wages and benefits. And so the, the wages line is something that I calculate and I'll work with the Human Resources Administrator to calculate based on decisions of the Select Board, whether it be staff or customer. So I provide department heads a, a number at the beginning of the process of what the wages might look like, subject to changes in the process. Similarly with benefits, we don't receive our information from our insurers until October typically. And so those benefit numbers are approximations until that point. And so this was actually feedback the board gave last year is that they, they sometimes it was confusing that there were different wage and benefit numbers and different documents. And there's not a great way to get around that because unless we start the budget process later in the year, when there's fewer unknowns, we're going to have to go in with some unknowns. I think we need to have some numbers in there as placeholders with known assumptions, you know, and that's why I have that for the wages and benefits, I have that listing of the assumptions that are made. So whether it's a 10% insurance increase or assuming a step or assuming a 1% cost of living, et cetera. But a good question, Mr. Chair.
Select person there.
Speaking of the board and myself, and I'm a simple person, but basically so it escalates. I wish the banks paid this. So I know employees are lost living, but we're going into a pandemic in the future. I don't know. And I'm scared. And if you are on fixed budgets and stuff, this is escalating to a lot more. It sounds 2, 3% with the tax to paycheck a year, you times that by 10 years, it's a lot of money. Future for another taxpayer. And we have people on fixed incomes. And then everything's going through with the hardship of this pandemic. I think people will be struggling more in the future.
Go ahead, George.
Thank you. One of the things that I have here on I, we need to consider. We take a look all the years we've sit here, we've paid to train our people and then look what happens after our people become proficient. I mean, we've lost them as far south as that one town outside of Boston there last year. We lost that one person. But we've lost other people around here too. And why did they leave? They left because of our salary structure, which already, I shouldn't say all forgive that, but I'm trying to blame anybody. But I'm just saying that. And, and they go to other places and they say they went because they need the extra money. The benefits may have trended as well. But, you know, they go for the money and we have to realize that when they go, now we're going to take taxpayers' dollars out of another fund and use that to turn around and to train and hire or hire and train, however we want to say it, other people for doing other positions in the town. And I think that this pay raise that we're considering would further work with. would further work with us and the town and the taxpayers to ensure that they'll have more of a steady rate. They will know where we're coming from and what it's going to take to run this town efficiently and to ensure that we don't have these people being stolen from us and we have to replace them. So that's all I have to say.
My general consensus is I don't agree with what you're saying, but it's fine.
I understand that I'm only one of five and I realize that also. I might be big, but I'm not that big.
So the that's right. The, the way I look at this is steps. And this is a conversation I've had with Connor, should always be something that is earned because somebody performs to a level that means they are worth more. It is, it is based on, it's not, it's not that people just get a raise for, because they occupied a chair and they breathed the air for a year. That's not the intended function or purpose of any position in this world. So a step is earned because you bring value to an organization. In this case, the town of Barrington is the organization. The proposed cost of living component of it is a factor in that. And I think the one thing we have to be cognizant of and careful of is that we are not Rochester, Dover, Durham. We are not a major city that continues to balloon. And also, if you look at the costs of being in those towns, their taxes are definitely north of ours. And I don't want to see Barrington end up that way, to be candid, because you get a lot more value and you can afford a lot more house by maintaining a relatively managed budget with a lower tax rate. And the people who live in town would be added value of having property that is worth more. And you can afford more property with a lower tax rate. So I think those are things we have to keep in mind and be very mindful of through this process.
I'm not, I have to say this.
I have to say you're interrupting. You didn't raise your hand and select person Mantra did have his hand up pointing patiently to speak.
Okay. Kind of. But if we do not give, basically what the Consumer Price Index shows is what the inflation of the whole property. So if we don't give people a cost of living. You're right about steps being for meritorious service. But if we don't give the Consumer Price Index or however you want to do it. We're in fact lowering their wages.
Potentially, but not, not necessarily.
Yeah, they don't eat and, you know, that sort of thing, it wouldn't raise. But the Consumer Price Index, pretty broad index of what people spend their money on. And so if that keeps creeping up and we hold our, we hold our wages, we're in essence decreasing.
But we're not holding our wages. We're increasing our wages with a step.
Yeah, but that's for a separate issue. That, that, oh, there's, that's two things. This would be across the board regardless, as you said, breathing air, but also eating and living indoors and heating and that sort of things. But the steps should be for merit.
I can tell you, in six years of sitting on this board, I don't know if I've ever seen a step decline anywhere.
That's absolutely false. There were, there were a handful of people last year and there's a handful of people, but people every year. I think the
If you would, from a non-public game, can you pull that information and present that to us? Because I would love to know who has not, who did not receive a step.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. And, and same thing, please, if we're having a discussion, I would, I would appreciate if you would interject by, with a request as opposed to just cutting it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Rest of the discussion.
I, I Mr. Mantra did this eloquently, whereas I would hip hop around, so I'm going to thank you for saying that much, thank you. I've got nothing else to say. I just think that I worry so, so much about our people just jumping ship because they come here for training, seeing. That's, that's the part, and we've had, we've had some that are glad they left, without mentioning names. I've had others that have loved us and it's been like, we better be kidding, but that's the way it is. Thank you, Manny.
So one thing I'll say to that is we have done, we did an enormous amount with the compensation study to go back and adjust compensation to make sure people were fairly and justly compensated. And if I remember correctly, we set a timeline that we were going to cycle back and review that study every when we talked about it with Tracy, it was like every four years or something or every three to five years.
Well, part of the, part of implementing the compensation study was making a commitment to keeping the pay plan up to date with cost of living adjustments. So the, the recommendations of the compensation study were to annually consider cost of living adjustments. And the recommendation for a full compensation study, which cost the town $15,000 was between eight and 10 years, which is, which is, you know, the, the far end of where you'd want to go with a, with another forward view.
Select person, Aaron.
To get back to them, but basically we, we all all I want to vote whatever, but basically we're going to back your tax base. We're doing the best job for them, let them vote on it. So given based on the personal feeling, whether it's right or wrong and stuff. The taxpayers are going to get involved, so we can do our homework the best we can. And let them decide because we're on the straight of that too far.
So I'll be candid, I don't think this is an if then strategy. It's not like you get one or the other. There's probably a blended approach that fits somewhere in here. We're saying, okay, we're going to move forward with a, with a step. What's that look like? Because in all fairness, I, I, and speaking from my own situation, I, I don't think I saw more than a 5% increase in my compensations last year. And yeah, I don't know how you can propel a town forward with everyone seeing a 5, 5 plus percent raise and not carry that burden onto the taxpayers with some sort of reasonableness in it.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
You may.
So I think part of the, part of the reason the board is based on these numbers, based on these data points, part of the reason the board's looking at a larger number this year is because the board chose not to institute a cost of living adjustment last year. And so the, the how, you know, inflation is a comp, has a compounding effect. So year over year, that the board does not institute a cost of living adjustment puts the, the pay plan farther away from where it was when it was established with the compensation study. And I understand your point about current employees. And yes, certainly a, a step that, you know, when the board authorizes a step for authorizing for, for employees that achieve an acceptable performance evaluation is a benefit to those employees. But what often other supervisors in town will look at is the pay ranges for the employees that we need to hire for. So a big reason that we, you know, paid for the compensation study was to make sure that we competitively advertise positions, open positions. A step, authorizing a step increase each year does not benefit the town for advertising those, those pay ranges. And so having a constant living methodology where every year the board is just using the data that's available to say, this is what inflation is. This is what we need to move our pay plan to make the value of the dollar this year be worth the same as the value of the dollar last year. And that allows us to advertise positions in the competitive position that the board agreed to when instituted in compensation study. And I guess by, if, if the board isn't interested in this methodology, which I'm not saying you have to be. What I was asked to do was to propose a methodology because the board wanted to have a cost of living methodology. Separate, separate than steps. And the board purposely wanted to review that methodology ahead of the budget season when we weren't looking at the real numbers. That we were just agreeing on the data points to say, this is the information that we should use to make a decision. This is the information that should be, that should be calculated. And so if there is a, a separate methodology that you recommend specifically for cost of living adjustment, I'd be happy to, to, you know, put pen to paper on other data points. But in serving communities, private sector, public sector, these are the data points that are used.
So am I interpreting it correctly that if we decided on a 2.5% COLA, then the base rate of every step would increase by 2.5%?
The entire pay process. And, and to be clear, I'm not asking for the board to, to, what the board is being asked to review tonight is the methodology for the cost of living adjustment. Later in the budget process, the board will be asked to review the the authorization to budget for a step. And to select person Air's point, the voters do decide. The voters decide when they, when they show up on election day to vote on the budget. And if the voters aren't happy on, aren't happy with the budget, whether it's because of a cost of living increase or the allowance for a step, they can make that decision by voting no on the budget. We certainly hope that they won't, but, but that's their involvement in this process.
I don't disagree with you on that, but we as representatives of the voting public are here to try and make the best and most educated decision we can for the people of the town so that we propose a budget, is the best possible budget that we can for them in a way that's truly meaningful.
Right. He was saying he'd like them to weigh in.
Select person, Aaron.
No. I assume we'll back and forth, but I just think I will, I look very to it a little ripe, I don't think it's going to be, we're getting tough times and stuff. That's why, you know, all I know is good, we'll be budgeted, so. Best we can. I don't know about it, I don't know.
The, select, go ahead, select person, Mantra.
No, I was just going to say that Social Security increases their benefits every year based on their Consumer Price Index. So it's not exactly a fixed income if you're on Social Security.
So should we follow the Social Security 1.3%?
That's another possibility.
It's, you know, I'm not trying to make a joke out of it, it's just
I'm serious, it is another possibility.
One thing that concerns me with this is, is you look at it over time and, and right now is a, during COVID was a perfect example where you had a lot of folks who exited the workforce and then did not re-enter for a plethora of reasons. Some of it because of the concerns and fear associated with COVID. Some of it because of the added benefit that they, that folks were gaining from the federal government by not returning to the workforce, which, if you follow it, drove the labor rates through the roof. And I can tell you, as I've been watching it, even at like local fast food places, because you see all their hiring signs, what I've actually started to see is the, the rate that they're offering positions at has actually started to come back down to a more normalized rate. Still higher than it was prior and well above the state's minimum wage. In many cases, probably close to double. But that, that's creating that ebb and flow. And one thing that I look at with this is we will go through periods of time as a town where it will become harder for the town to hire. And then in lean times, it will become very easy for the town to hire. Because people are looking for that stability and not going to leave positions of stability. So the, my general take on this is we need to find a balance that works somewhere in the middle. It doesn't mean we're going to be the premium, but it also doesn't mean that you're driving a Kia. No offense to anyone driving a Kia. Coming from the guy who drives an Nissan Versa, so. Select person Bailey.
Thank you very much. I, I think that
I didn't call you mad at least.
I think that we have to be careful that we don't take a step, step and a half backwards on this. I think that if we look at what's been proposed, what's been proposed is half of what I would think about. Because I think that the cost of living goes with the standard wage and everything else. When it comes to a reward, I think if we put that 2. something percent on, on the rewards side, I think we should look at maybe doing two, Mr. Chairman, because you know, it, it gets us away from the 5%. But the ultimate goal is that what, what I have been working with you and others over the years is to get to that $20 level. Get to $20 a month. I look at everything, I say, how much more is this going to save? Or how much more is it going to put us up over what we have? Or how close to our goal that we have set for us, our personal goals we've set, not the board's goal, as to where we want to have the rate be for the, for the, the taxpayers. And, and I think that if we made a compromise on the cost of living, if we turned around and said, the cost of living on this point will give this much here, then on the reward side, which is the steps, turn around, look at saying, all right, what would we consider a good reward percentage to have on it? And that way there, it would satisfy, it would satisfy me. And hopefully others that would have a different aspect of it, not wanting to get up that 5% mark would work, it would work that way there. And that way there, we would take care of everything. We would take care of the, each employee in each section and we would accomplish something. But if we go another year by saying, that's it, that's it. And as in a private conversation, yeah, we have that new COVID piece coming down the road there, that Delta, you know? Yes, it's coming, but give me a classic example.
It's here.
It's, it's, it's here, but on the employees part, this afternoon, we had business enforcement. We went there, we went to a, an Italian restaurant there on the side of the road. We went in there and we had, we were in there at quarter or two, 1:30, quarter and two. We had to wait 20 minutes. Why? Because they didn't have enough staff to work there. But there's so many jobs in town, it's here. When's that money stop coming in? It's supposed to be what, September 1st, if I'm not mistaken, or is it?
Just got extended out again, COVID relief.
Which one? While the housing
Unemployment, unemployment benefits. Got extended?
Oh, no, yeah.
You gotta be kidding me. No, so that's, that's how, I know you can't, but what I'm saying is, is that, you know, we can take care of our employees with, with a basic one, then, then we can pose it, we reward. We reward our exceptional employees and we can give them something. That, that's, that's it, thank you.
Select person, Seko. I would announce a few questions, just quick questions off you. So I just want to make sure I know what I'm talking about. So the step increase is to increase everybody across the board. This fire, EMS, school, Connor, tax, everybody.
No, the step is what they, what they earn in their, essentially their review increases a step. And then the COLA is what would increase the entire pay scale. So every step in grade would increase based on the percentage of the COLA that we look at.
I don't, I mean, I come from, obviously, the trade side of things. A little bit different, non-union, all that, but I've worked merit my whole life. You know, the more you put in, the more you get out. That's how I've been taught my whole life. So that, that's probably the way I'm going to go because I, I think, you know, in earlier meetings this year, I think Chief Joy brought somebody in or, you know, we, we made another position for him, you know, where departments are starting to get creative to get people in. You know, not necessarily this program, but I think, you know, when, you know, if he comes like, hey, you know, and our new K9 guy is, is great, top notch, you know? He's been this, 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 he sucks up all the overtime and holidays, like, you know, this guy definitely deserves a buck. I mean, I don't see any problem with that coming to us. And, you know, granted, you know, we would probably grant that. As you said, you know, most of the stuff that comes before us does pass. Has there been stuff that hasn't passed? We'll wait to see that. As I can't confirm that. But I think with this COVID Delta and, you know what I mean? I think there are some people that are, are fine. Do I think some people are seen fine that probably aren't? Yes. You know, I don't know, this could, i- it's hard to know what our government's going to do to put us back into this. You know, if the COVID Delta wreaks havoc like, like last.
This, I'm sorry. The, the question I have, I guess that's guided toward you, Connor, is if, if we gave a two and a half percent COLA, how does it reset the scale? How do we track it? So it's, how are you tracking it so it resets the scale at zero right here? Because what I don't want to see happen is that trend carries on where suddenly we get a year from now and it's, well, there was a, you know, a two, a two and a half percent over the last year.
So it's an excellent point.
Yes, that's an excellent point. And so the, the language of the, the proposed methodology corrects for that. And so how it corrects for that, the consumer price index for those values, those are generally issued every month or every two months. And so, uh, in each category of the consumer price index, there's a base year where, you know, 1979 equals 100. And then the, the, the value of this data set is each month, they show what the value is that month compared to that base year. And so, you know, the, if you look at, um, consumer price index northeast in April of 2020 is 271.325. And in May of 2020 is 271.345. So that represents a 0.02% increase over that one month. And so you can identify data points at any point throughout the data that's available to make your adjustments based on it. So in the methodology, what it says is that the, the calculation for what the proposed, what the difference is between when the last time it changed and now. So right here, you, in the proposal, in the historical data, you see that it goes back to April of 2020. Because that's when the, the wage scale was updated last. Because during the budget process last year, the, uh, select board chose not to institute positive living adjustment. So the pay plan that was initiated in April 2020 is the one. So that's why it's cumulative over time and then it resets to zero. Because when you get to, you know, so say it's October that the select board makes a decision. From that point forward, that would be zero. That would be the new zero that's compared to the data that's looked at the next October. And the important thing to keep in mind, you'll notice that there's negative values in the consumer price index here. Generally inflation trends in a positive direction. That's how inflation has worked in the United States, sometimes more rapidly than others. But sometimes it goes backwards and that's the, that the beauty of an established data point is it's representative of what the cost of all of those items in the index are. Uh, and, and so it self-corrects to that extent as well. So it would absolutely start at zero. It's in the language of the methodology.
Excuse me. There, I mean, there's a hundred little nuances of this that, um, that stand out to me and I in theory, love the idea. My big concern is that at some point there is a labor correction tied to this or a consumer pricing index correction. And the piece that I struggle with is how we handle that. And, and the perfect example is if you look at, again, oh, seven, oh, eight, oh, nine, even into 2010. It, which I believe Rick addressed to some standpoint, they went five or six years or seven, about eight years without a compensation adjustment. So as long as we're mindful of that, I'm, I'm more in line with, with it. I don't know if I'm fully on board at going the full two and a half percent.
And that's not the number. I mean, this only looks at data through June. We're going to be, I mean, the data that we're going to be actually using is through October and it could go either direction. I think the benefit of making a decision based on choosing data points is you don't know what the numbers are going to be. And if you agree that these numbers reflect inflation and the value of the dollar. And I'll be honest with you, if you follow any of the news, the correction that's happening is not a correction. Inflation is, is increasing rapidly and, and a lot of that has to do with the, uh, you know, government spending and the, uh, you know, government incentives and things like that, uh, stimulus, stimulus funds. And that, that was a known consequence, right? I mean, the, uh, that was expected to happen. But that's the correction that we're expecting to see is that inflation, the inflation rate is going to pick up. That's going to be reflected in consumer price index and social security. And that, that can hurt, right? I mean, that, the, if the value of the dollar decreases 5% over a year, that hurts people. And I think what the select board is being asked to consider is saying that we want the value of, of the paycheck we sent home to employees to mean the same this year as it will next year, regardless of inflation. And yeah, sometimes that could be a painful decision on the bottom line. But if, if you agree and recognize that inflation, correcting for inflation is important and it, and it does impact the value of the dollar, then it's, you know, something that you need to consider.
Sure. Select person Bailey?
I would like to take this a step forward, you know, commissioning it and, uh, give you what I think would be fair and equitable, uh, thing, items to consider, because right now we're doing all this figuring. So we would at least have a, uh, basis for our budget for when the time comes, but the ultimate decision by us, correct?
Yep.
Okay. My proposal for, to you, if it considers that we would do the cost of living as recommended at 2.5, but on the step raise, we do that at 1.25.
Um, I don't know if we can, I don't think we can do that, but because the steps are locked.
They're locked.
They don't, you don't, we can't, we don't alter those. Select person Mantra.
That's an alternative to that. If we consider using the social security consumer price index as our, as our data points, uh, work on the correction. It's going to be less than the, the New England, Boston social security. Lot less, a lot less, some less than Northeast Boston social security. And a lot of the people, a lot of the people that are paying our taxes here, uh, are on social security. They're basing it on social security. That would be my recommendation.
Select person there?
I'll second that.
So do we want to start on that room and then, um, when would we project seeing updated numbers on this?
Yep. So that's listed in the methodology. So for the consumer price index, um, with the exception of the Boston numbers, those are issued monthly. Um, when I checked last week, uh, July hadn't been issued. So it's generally the middle of the month. Um, the, the social security cost of living is issued once a year and that's in October. And so if the select board were going to decide, we're going to tie our cost of living adjustment to the social security cost of living adjustment. That would be the value that they decide on and issue in October. So it's 1.3 is currently, and it's, you know, and to your point about when you reset to zero, I mean, what I, if I were going to rewrite the methodology to just say social security, I would recommend to compound the 1.3 at what they issue in October. Because the 1.3 goes back to the last time the pay plan changed. The select board can choose not to do that. That's fine. But, uh, if you're just going to use the one data point, that's how I would recommend to do it.
So, um, do we want to move forward? Do we want to use the 1.3 as our, our baseline data point to proceed?
Well, I, my proposal was to use the October. Use, use a consumer price index, whatever it might be.
Social Security, yeah, October social security CPI. Or October social security COLA. Yep, sorry. Too many, too many kind of items going around here. Yeah. And select person air?
I'll second that.
Seconds that methodology? Okay. Discussion. Select person Bailey?
Thank you. I would, I'd just like to, uh, say, I don't think, uh, social security really does too much to help anyway. I'd like to see that be at 2% instead of 2.5 or the 1.3.
It's just a methodology. We're just using it as a baseline methodology. It's not a percentage. I want to.
Not giving a number.
Right.
No number attached, but we're going to use it.
Select person Secoshia. Please.
Sorry, man. I know what you're.
So the motion as made was to, is to, um, for consideration for COLAs, use the social security COLA as, you know, that comes out in October as our baseline percentage that we would look at for, um, our in-town COLA.
Right. Yes.
Trying to gather it all in there and pack it up. And I have a select person on it or a second from select person there.
Air I.
And then we have discussion and I believe Mr. Bailey, do you have anything else you would like to add to that?
No, sir. Thank you.
Air I. And Trac I.
Finally, I.
It's Coach I.
Yeah, bye. I will update the methodology just to indicate that one data point. Um, and I'll, I'll, uh, send a draft to the chair just to say this reflects and.
And can we, I, I do find this to be very valuable and it creates a lot of good discussion. Would we be able to keep this rolling so we can use it at a future, for future reference points?
Yeah. So I mean, I guess I, I think the board decided, uh, something different than I thought the board was trying to decide. Because if, if the board still intends to make a subjective decision in October based on what the numbers are, then it doesn't essentially matter what methodology you establish because you're still going to make a subjective decision. I thought the board wanted to establish a, a methodology that takes the subjectivity out and says that we're going to agree to these numbers and use these numbers. So to your point, if the select board still intends to make a subjective decision in October, you're not tied to just using the social security number. You could use all of these numbers. The feedback I got last year was that the select board felt like they were put in a rock and a hard place when considering cost of living adjustment last year. Because not that the board was, was, um, but you were presented the numbers of, hey, the average cost of living increases 1.25%. What do you want to do? And there was a perception, um, that the board was going against employees by not adopting a cost of living increase, which wasn't the board's intention. The board adopted a step increase and that was terrific. Uh, so I thought the board wanted to get away from making a subjective decision during budgets about it. Uh, but it sounds like that you're still going to make a subjective decision, which is, which is okay by me. I just want to make sure that's what you're intent.
I would personally, I don't necessarily agree with that. What I'm, what I'm looking at is to create enough data points where I can look at this and say, okay, yeah, I definitely agree that one of these three is the best methodology. And then you have me on your side or trying to convince the rest of the board that, yeah, this, this is the best methodology for us to move forward. Sure. And ideally looking at the longer trend of it starts to, to create a perception of which way, if I was looking at it on a line diagram, I'm going to see where my gap is. And is it, is it growing or shrinking? Cause I really do think it's going to ebb and flow.
Absolutely.
Depending on what's happening in the world at this time. And I'll tell, tell everybody as I was reading some items today. One of the pieces they're talking about is that the US is actually trying to drive inflation because it potentially lowers our, our, our international debt, so to speak, that we have. Not that I agree with that premise, but that's some of what they're talking about. Anyway, thank you. Appreciate you stopping. 2021 tax feeding.
So this is just for information. The board will be asked to review a few, uh, D waiver requests in non-public. Um, the purpose of the non-public is to avoid adversely affecting the reputation of, uh, the property holders that, um, are finding it difficult to pay their property taxes. The list is updated as of Wednesday. I believe I don't believe there's been any that have paid since then. Um, so we'll discuss this more in non-public and any decisions that the select board makes will be announced in public following the non.
That'd be good. The UTV bid, Chief Walker, would you like to come up for a discussion about the UTV bid?
Rick, I appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Frankly, we're. So you folks had most of the information from me. One of the things we found was is that when we, we got price quotes in this, uh, October, November timeframe, we took this together for the, uh, process to come up with a number, um, all our numbers were within the, uh, $32,000 we asked. Then fast forward to get to July and like everything else, those price increases because of product availability and stuff. We were, uh, unpleasantly surprised to find that we couldn't purchase, uh, everything we wanted. Budget for the result. The request and, uh, and one of the vendors acted and called me and said, hey, uh, I'll throw a proposal together, but he goes, I don't know how quick you want one of these things. He says, I will see one before November. And I said, that's fine. Just put on the bottom of your quote or bid that, you know, whatever the timeframe is that you see this. That vendor didn't actually end up with the quote enough bidding. I don't have any idea why. I think there were another vendor, um, I was concerned, called the same thing that they promised that that's in this outing. If they would have been tomorrow, they want the, the next day and I can't predict it. So, uh, what ended up coming out of it was is that, um, Bulldog HK Venture all bid the K&amp;M unit. Bulldog, um, is a vehicle manufacturer. So every, every single item there was, they're just, uh, they're just a subcontractor. So ultimately, um, not even a little bit surprised that, that number was there. So as we came down and started looking at the stuff and did our homework and talking to the different people that were familiar with these, we felt that the K&amp;M was the, uh, we only had a, we didn't get anything other than the K&amp;M, it was at CF. Um, so, uh, we, we felt on the committee that the K&amp;M was the best unit for the community. And so, uh, that brought back to us, we started booking and, uh, we were, uh, it's about $10,000 short. So it was last Tuesday night, we held a special association meeting, uh, to discuss what a association was interested in purchasing, uh, because we felt it was important to come to you with. Here's what the association wants to do rather than you guys something, so I can back the association, let's see if they want it. So, uh, the unanimous decision of the association last week was to, um, go with a K&amp;M unit. What the bid to Venture Motorsports and the, uh, association very graciously offered to, uh, up that the anti, um, so that, um, we would, we'd be able to purchase everything with the, uh, $33,062.94.
Select person air? Are you going to build, let's judge your on this?
So, so it'll, it'll be a backwatering, sorry.
And then, cause, um, peaceability is of, of the tracks, it's been more of a fire. I'm really detracting with that.
So, so primarily for the, the, there's two schools of, but Thomas Strachan has tracks on their unit that they don't take. People say that, uh, one of our guys is the forest service. He uses a forest for the federal government. He runs, he uses it to save the time. He runs the tracks in the winter, early spring. Takes the tracks off. He was back tires in the summer season. There's two schools of, I don't think, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think there's anybody, you know, it's, it's, it's what came first, the chicken. Yeah. Some people will absolutely say, leave the tracks on here. I'll be done with it. People say, don't put the tracks on at all. So, you know, so we felt that primarily in the winter time, that's been, we're going to need to go up on the ice and, and get somebody. And again, if it's ice and the, and use of the tires, I think, but if we have winter where we get freezing, the snow will cross all the lakes. And you're trying to, you're trying to take and shove a hole through that long snow. If it's not hot, that, the tracks, and if we have to get older onto the, the trails, um, in the wintertime, the snowmell trails will be better for. in the wintertime, the snowmell trails will be better for us with tracks in the time. So, and we are looking at that, we're proposing two separate units, easily removable, one of the four is going to carry about 50 gallons of water. And some hand tools, the idea is to be able to get it in the fire, whack it down real quick, or contain it, try to get other equipment in. It'll sit there if it's, if it's there and if one or the other, in, in just about five minutes, we'll pull one unit off, but the other unit on in the, in the area of, we certainly use that they will be into one of those units. So when they need it, again, five minutes to be moved, that's tough.
My second question is, this is personal, but vendors, steel trailer? I would not buy a steel trailer aluminum, I repaired so many of them, so a lot of vendors, aluminum real good. But on my sanding trucks, years ago, I saw it, but with flat beds aluminum, so just trailer don't last.
So we, again, we looked at, the thing is, we're not going to use a trailer on a daily basis, obviously, we're going to use a trailer. We will give them, they won't pick up files when somebody else does. Most everybody we talked to that indicated the aluminum trailer is going to hold up the phone, the steel trailer, so that's why we decided. Contract with Town has to make in the basis of the little trailer, lock the vehicle down. The B rings in the trailer didn't hold a piece of equipment, B rings out of the trailer and they destroyed about $50 on a piece of equipment because of.
Yeah, this is my personal sound, I was saying.
Select person, Scotia.
I agree with you on the steel, because let's forget steel bends, aluminum usually just breaks or snaps. But are you happy with the K&amp;M unit? Or would you like to see, you know, because HK, I know that they sell Polaris. There's also other Polaris dealers, so I mean, if you're, if you're comfortable with the K&amp;M, I'm comfortable with it.
We are.
Or would you be open, I mean, because we're going to be waiting till November anyways, I mean, it's not like we're going to get it tomorrow.
I don't know that's the case, no, no other vendor actually said to me, hey, this, this is going to get some problems. It's that one vendor, HK only offered up the K&amp;M.
Yeah, no, and yeah, that's the, yeah, so.
Motorsports.
Motorsports, on Route 11 in Rochester, very surprised we didn't, they, they actually worked with the city of Rochester. Not sure exactly.
No, did we notify them?
What?
That there was a steel bid or was it just post okay?
We mailed out either 12 or 13 pack, we have to mail them in, I handle them every 15 minutes.
So I am in support of this, but two things that I do want to add to it is I do not want tracks ran on it year round. Because it could take, you know, if somebody just inexperienced, it's just tougher on the U joints and whatnot, something to think about.
And we don't, that's, that was right from the very beginning.
I, I agree with the early springs, that stuff, that, that all makes sense to me. And then I don't want to see this thing on a trailer during spring to fall. Because, you know, we, we should have the, the right people who are trained to drive fire trucks, ambulances, police cruisers. And they should be able to open the garage door up. We have somebody that's hurt way back in the ball fields, fire it up, go down, it's going to have lights on it, correct?
Everybody, everybody will be probably trained, will be used to the thing before they come. So everybody will be trained to use it, yes, you're right, there'll be, there'll be lights on it, a limited amount of things, right? So we certainly use them, you know, their lights.
And I know I kind of probably threw in something, I don't know if we need to do a, a separate vote for, for that aspect to make it so that the side by side is able to go on roads and bearings. Or police and fire, I don't know if that's something we'll have to vote separately on, but I think that way we're going to avoid a lot of issues of being like, shoot, we got the cold, now we got to load it up, or somebody's going to back up to hook up a trailer. Or then we have a truck that's equipped with a trailer. I think it would just be easiest and I mean, let's be honest, you know, most of the stuff is, is right down Route 9. Or it's, it's on the other side.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is with the signal trail, if we end up to the Stonehouse, it's still house on the area, it's going to be quicker to put right on the trailer. Think of if, again, it'll be parked in such a way, it'll be easier accessible year round. And if push comes to shove, a truck pull the thing out, drop the tailgate, we're going to buy a trailer with a tailgate, we're going to invest one brand, drop the tailgate back to play off. And take off, leave the truck and the trailer sit there if it's, if it's quick enough for us.
Because this is a, this is 1,000 cc, right?
I believe so, it is.
Yeah, so this should be able to do 40, 50 miles an hour. So I mean, might maybe something to consider, I mean, obviously it's your department and you know what's best for, for you and your men and women. But that, that's how I would stress to the board, because I think, I mean, opening up a door, somebody hopping in. They could do 40, 50 over to Stonehouse without somebody, you know, I'm just trying to, to be efficient here.
It'll be faster with a trailer.
That's, that's what I would, I would like to think, so that's, that's all I got, but excellent work, excellent presentation. Thank you.
Select person, Eric.
Before I would vote on that, I'd like feedback from my insurance company while running it all.
Okay. I'm so excited, I suggest we, we just vote on purchasing the equipment and then, once we do find out from the insurance company, then we can.
Deal with all the other Kuchumons.
And the only reason I say that, because I happen to be downtown Manchester the other day. And they were rolling right down Main Street in their UTV, so. Just trying to follow suit, I don't think we're trying to pioneer something here, so.
Wish you good way in, but I understand the state law references that in emergency where fire, any events, unless you were a source of the bill necessary, then the safety.
And I don't think it's another special insurance thing either, you got to do what you got to do to get there to save the people or keep people safe.
We obviously, you know, from my perspective, doesn't cost anything to register or play on the thing.
No, and it's got directionals and has all the right safety standards, so I would like to make a motion if somebody else on the board or.
I, I just want to clarify, will it be a bearing tricentennial?
I would like, I would like to see a Christmas ornament on the mirror.
All right, do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to accept the purchase of the K&amp;M from Venture Powersports.
For the sum total of?
For the sum total of 32,962.94 cents.
Second.
Eric.
And Trac Eye.
Bailey Eye.
Scotia. That by, even though I voted no on the purchase of this to begin with.
I voted on no.
Certainly we appreciate that, if I may ask, obviously we'll get town seals on the thing and stuff like that. But I, I would like permission to put a small decal somewhere on the thing.
It doesn't even have to be super small either, it can be so people can read it.
Not super. You want to vote on that?
I honestly think we should.
Yes, let's vote CYA, you know.
So a motion to.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, select person there.
To allow stepping people to on the town vehicle, so there can fire, fire them at some station.
So under Chief Walker's.
Tullage. Yeah. I, I mean, considering they're, they're covering more than half the cost, they could really like.
Yeah, they can, they can do what they want.
Don't worry, we're going to, we're going to pay forward to the long run.
So was that a Bailey Eye?
No, it is second.
I, I will second.
Eric.
Scotia. That by, even though I voted against the whole thing.
And then it's.
We're probably going to do magnetic decal something, so we'll pick and swap.
Select, select person, Eric.
Remind you, I, number D is a marshal property.
Yes, we'll, we'll be there in a moment, so it'll be like hyper colored, so you can flip a switch and it's red for fire and blue for police, it's like that where we're going with this?
We're going to hide it all. Thank you very much.
Well, I mean, you want to stay right there?
We have one, we have one more item under old business, which select person there brought up was map 247 lots 11 and 20. Where's your select person there?
Yes, last night we approved.
Not last night?
Last meeting, we approved a list, a lot of hard work was done by Townlands Committee itself. And then there's a couple of people on the offensive of the marshal law. I talked to the chairman, he has no hard feelings and stuff, it's just a guy who did, they worked on the best deal, so he went to the butters first. And then the cost to the town upgrade that road. $3 million, but hold on, hold, he said it, it's not that annoying, I'm sitting here, it's not that annoying.
So what is your?
I'd like to reconsider the, that we did last meeting to pull them out of the list.
So you're making a motion to pull map 247 lots 11 and 20 from the list of items to be considered for.
Transfer.
Transfer sale. Right term for that.
Sorry.
Transfer to sell in USA. That's the list that sent us.
So retain the property, I'll just do it.
Retain the property.
To retain the property, thank you very much. See, that's who we pay in the big less. All right, so we have a motion to retain map 247 lots 11 and 20.
Second.
Eric.
Yes, that by. All right. New business, the fire department staffing plan in 2022 budget considerations.
Thank you very much. The main, the main purpose for this conversation tonight is the Kyber that indicated that, that makes perfect sense. It's, if we're going to come in and if we're looking for staffing changes or sort of things that are going to be a big increase in our budget. Then it makes sense to have a conversation with the board as likely at a time. That's not a disrespect to the budget committee, it's just more to either get the board's feel for it as opposed to you folks getting with. My fire, my budget, I'm like, but by the way, I've, I've added all this stuff to it rightfully so. You have, you should have the ability to have a conversation about a big budget increase or a big budget expenditure or addition. And have the opportunity to think about it for a while and discuss it amongst yourselves. And so the primary purpose for this tonight is to get that out there and get some feedback from you folks to give me to come back, to go back as I prepare my budget in the direction in which is a potentially acceptable view. So most of you are aware of the fact that I've said for a while that I ultimately need to get to two people on staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And as, as my, as I get a little older, and hopefully in a few years, reach the opportunity to retire. Certainly, it's my goal to be in the position for whoever is the next chief to have two people on staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The, the, the thing that's tough to understand and I, yeah, this is, you know, the when you sit and look at the cost associated with it, just rough numbers. It's about 100 to add, I'm proposing to add two full-time firefighter EMTs. What that would allow me to do in addition to what we have on staff now is to take these four individuals and run, they run their own shifts, it would be A, B, C, and D shift like most apartments around here. Model they use, they would come in, they work their 24-hour shift, they'd be off for two days, they'd come in to work a 24-hour shift and they'd be off for four days. So it would, every week you're moving, so if they were Tuesday, Saturday, next week, Wednesday, Sunday, they would be, they would be backfilled with a per BM and or slash part-time employee to get two people on 24 hours a day. Backfilled with a per BM and or slash part-time employee to get two people on 24 hours a day. But when I look at, when we look at money, one of the things that you know, administrator, I'm sorry, one of the things he did share with me. They do a very, the town does a very good job of exiting the use when people leave. So far, managed to keep the jobs against it. Tough to work for, but one of the things that they do, that he had shared with me and a number of a couple of people that left and shared with me is that part of the reason they left was the scheduling. People firefighting EMTs by their very nature, make an okay salary, but in order for them to make a good living to, to take care of their family, most of them, well, you know, they do their two 24-hour shifts a week. That provides them a couple of three days to go up, either work for themselves or work for a, work for somebody on the side still of a couple of days. So that, and that's ultimately how they make a good living for their family. So when, when you get a small department like us, that either they're working four or five days a week. For, for near the same money as working a 24-hour shift, that doesn't afford them to be obviously working stuff on the side and looking for their family. So again, what I've done in the past, and if you look at that 159,000 dollar figure, which is pretty scary, I'll say that as a taxpayer myself. That's a pretty scary figure, much like I've done in the past, whenever you approve making changes. It's intended to start around April 1st, budget for 39 weeks out of the year. I just have always felt that it's better to take the big hit the first year through rather than, than do six months this year and six months next year. That, you know, if you, if you explain to the owners that it would lose for nine months, next year when the budget impact is going to be for three months, we're going to sub to a full year. It's in my home, and it's just been a little bit easier to swallow. That being said, the, there will be some cost losses. Now, again, this proposal is not, it was not intended to save money, it's intended to provide the services that the taxpayers need. And but there will be, there will be areas within the budget that will show cost. So obviously, some of the calls that can be handled, whether it's people that are on, on staff, would mean that the. Would mean that the, some of the call members, volunteers wouldn't go to some of the, wouldn't need to go to some of these calls, so that there would be. Some money cost savings there. It'd also be some minor cost savings in the. Bottom side of the um. Budget, because we would, as long as we have to come on, then we would probably reduce that line. To uh, I would. We, we would consider something, you know, I would. I might consider the fact of having two people on if, if somebody was going to call them sick or something, the last one. So, but I ultimately think that the majority of them. You know, I think there's a, there's a number of ways in which we can get to where we need to be. And uh, you know, in a perfect world, you guys just broke the stamp this right now, and if you would have wanted to go back, instead of doing, we thought.
We only have.
Same show, seven to eleven?
Try to view.
But you know, what I would, I mean, I, I gotta get my budget in relatively soon. But what I really hope to get out of this tonight is, is that you guys are on board with me, that you feel that the next two to three years is where we need to be. I'm going to turn sixty-two next month. My game plan is at sixty-five, and so I can hit that. I'm looking forward to go.
Eighty-two.
Eighty kids.
Much good.
Talking since eight.
And that's uh. That's not a hundred percent edge in its own, but um certainly at sixty-five, it's time for. Take it, take this over. So um. You know, again, I don't feel, I, I didn't come into this with the idea that I would get both of these this year. But I think that you folks deserve to know that that's where I need to be the next three years. And this is what today's goal is. Bottom line. I, I mean, so, you know, in a perfect world, what I would like to see you folks do is instruct me to go back and come up with a proposal that. Either I could find a little bit of money in my budget at the end of the year. You folks would agree to hire that full-time position in late November, early December. That would guarantee that the position rise in the budget next year. We add the one person next year. We come back in twenty-three with some added funding, so perhaps we add that, skip that second person. Possibly into the wheel in twenty-three, whatever that looks. And by twenty-four, it's fully implemented that we would, with the qualification of full-time employee, full-time fire chief. And part-time, thirty employees.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add a couple of quick things, uh, I, I think this is a big conversation for the board to have, and I think the chief has done a fantastic job putting the materials together. Uh, I want to say that, that the objective is one that I couldn't agree with more from my perspective. In where we need to be to turn the fire department over to a new fire chief. And you won't find a more um, a, a person that's more conservative with their spending and budgeting than Chief Walker. And this has been something that, that has been a goal of his for a while. And he spent a lot of time and effort and as, as, as his, have his people to chase grant funding, to try to bring additional positions on and everything else. And the, the reality is, um, I believe that this is absolutely where we need to be. And I agree with Rick, and I'm glad that he presented it this way, um, to first get the board to, to uh consider agreeing to that objective. Um, so, you know, first establish that we know where we need to get. Um, and then let Rick and I work on within what you'd like to see, your priorities and objectives, the path to get there. I think we have a lot of different options, uh, and we certainly don't have to finalize it before the budget process, you know, you can look at everything. Uh, but like Rick said, I think there's, uh, he's had some vacancies in his department. We could go as soon as hiring a person this year, building it into the budget. Or going slower with six months of a position next year and, and, but by three years getting to that position, uh, is where I think we need to be. And I look forward to the discussion. Thanks for letting me.
Select person, Bailey?
Thank you. Well, first question is, I guess this is something I didn't anticipate. I just hope that uh your presentation when it comes to dollars, uh, Connor also, that's a comment for you too. Is that when the dollars are put together, if we can be reasonable with it, what have you? Uh, uh, what, uh, two, two other questions. One is, where would that second ambulance play? How would you uh use it, or do you plan on putting it into this position? Or is it something you would use in the case of a call, you, you had a call out, and then you had another one? Uh, you know, would you call any other people that were on uh, do, how would that work? Would, would you, would then? And with the cost of outfitting that amb, second ambulance, would that be involved? That's one, one of the questions.
That wouldn't change because the second ambulance, again, the second ambulance is there, it's a value. There's a trade-in. We've used it. Um, I do swap it back and forth with the current first two piece. So we've saved somewhere around twenty-five hundred miles on the ambulance, kept twenty-five hundred miles on the ambulance at this point. So again, um, my position hasn't changed with the old ambulance. If, if something came up with the old ambulance. Um, we, it would, it would stay just the way it is right now. If we had a need for, if we had staffing for it. As, as in call numbers had a second call, well, first ambulance, I would use it, but if you have anything. This proposal.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect the cost of this proposal?
No, not at all. And then again, the second ambulance, if, if a big doll, I'm still committed to the fact that if a big doll expense came up on this. I would come to this board and say, look, we're faced with a five thousand dollar expense on the same account, because it's worth it. My recommendation is just take the ambulance off.
I have another question. First note that uh, when you retire, do you plan on settling, you were staying here in Barrington?
I intend, I understand.
That's good. At least we know. We'll get, we'll get the tax dollars back.
Just need to have a better conversation with one.
Thank you.
Select person, Mantrick?
I've thought about this a long time too. Uh, it does seem that if the day when we work, lay with volunteers, probably passed, especially in this, in this town. Can't do it as much as they used to. And the techniques, the quality of training is necessary. It's almost beyond what we can expect volunteers to do. So I think it is wise for the town to do this sooner rather than there.
I believe I heard Rick say he was going to become a full-time volunteer when he retired.
I did say that.
Can show you where the door is.
So there are volunteers, but just, you can't, you can't. Uh, hold on, you can't provide the service you need. With all of them.
So the, the one area that starts to concern me as we get into this revolving model is when you start adding. Paid time off into the equation and using other slots to fill it, your, your overtime line could go like through the roof and then some.
Right.
And so how are we managing, how are we planning for that?
So, so part of the model I want to show is currently right now is that if you can have. Uh, if you can have a robust group of people that work per year or part-time, then we can fill that. Extra shift within people, much like we do now. So I have people that work twenty-four hours. And I can on a uh regular basis allow one of them people to work an extra twelve-hour shift. Now, if I wanted to do more than that, which I did, I, I worked, I gave resources very time, straight. When we lost our full-time employee once recently, and the employee starts next week. I had about a six to seven week window, which we were, we signed contract, no contract, we signed work agreements with our part-time. Say they could work up to four, eight hours. We did, we changed their benefit status, we changed anything. They signed it knowing that possible end date of X. And if we needed to extend that, then I had to move back to the top of the story. So my intention would be is that we would have enough of people on the perian side of it. That, yes, you're right, we'll have to increase the, the, I'm a little bit, but my intention would be is I would try to fill it with perian people, which are conservative.
But just for my own clarity, that's not factored into the one fifty-nine, three eighty-three, correct?
That's, that one fifty-nine, three eighty-three is your base price. Hire two more full-time employees with, and we based it on a family plan of insurance, where, where's possible case, all across. Administrator and Kyber offered up a formula that town uses sometimes, it's a percentage of people that don't take the insurance. I really wanted to hit the highest number possible and hope that we came back in.
So I, I guess my general thought is, I've been, since I received my packet. Uh, well, this, the material's from Connor last week, and then as I picked everything up and started looking through it, I've been trying to process through and digest. What this looks like and um, and even talking with other folks I know in the fire service and other towns and some of. Who were chiefs and things like that, and some of the, the catch-twenty-twos that they've run into and how they're dealing with them. And I would really want to make sure we have a very mindful plan about that before I was ever willing to commit to any of.
So, so one of the things, and I, and I'll touch on, on one of those, one of those things is the, the last thing you need. Unless you depend on your homeowners and volunteers. At some point, they stand, you know what, I've been on a call in two months and, and so. I'm very mindful of the fact, and I try to make sure I tell my homeowners all the time on a regular basis at meetings. You people are making this fire a lot, much, not rip water to full-time. We're here to compliment you. We're here because you're not available, and I need you to come out at night, and need you to continue to play in a little bit of curfew. That might be cause we have a host of, we have a bad accident, we have to talk about working cardiac arrest. The two people that are on duty are not enough to handle the situation. So I need to make sure that my other people are engaged, they stay engaged and not committed.
When you have some jerk with alarms going off at like two AM in this building, you know, guys like that.
You're posing.
Alright, um. My general take is I really want to go digest this and think through it some more. I, I don't have a, a good answer for you at this time. I don't know how anybody else feels about it.
Great discussion. I would like to see uh the points that you made on the dollars, or if somebody's out, how that would work out too, in the long run, how it would work for us.
Like what's the, are you talking about what's, what, what could we plan for and potentially project for overtime?
Yeah, for overtime, project part of that piece in there, and then how we, uh, we have to use a uh method to uh coerce them to stay on or whatever. Is that a possibility?
If I might just offer a suggestion, if. If, if you folks put two on this the next two weeks, and I really wasn't looking for you, this, this is hundred percent just to have a conversation with you folks. Um, administrator, look, I will get this out, but I'm willing to see the same dog. I, if I may just ask you to kind of. Come up amongst, to build, come back to the next meeting with some kind of an idea, what you think works for you. Um, I would like this, I'll prepare my budget, I'd like to, I'd like to leave that one there in my budget. I would like, I'd like to crunch it in the budget, because I think it serves two purposes. One. Even though I'm uncomfortable that I won't give both people, you'll see what the budget impacted in the picture. But more importantly, this will buy me a little time, so knowing full well that, you know, you're not likely to try anything out of the budget that you're going to. That would buy me some time in a couple of weeks if you come back and say, hey, give us, tell us what the dollar figures, this model, this model, this model. That'll be a time, you a little time to work with the town, with resources, to build, build a document to, you know, pay if you can plan A, it's this model, we'll be safe. But that makes sense.
I have a question. What would it take to get, I'd love to see how your model operates currently. What would it take to get that and have you share that with us? So.
I, I can give it to you off the top of my head.
So listen, and, and I think we, Rick and I, I had the same question you did last year. I've been here, you know, a year and a half, and I'm like, Rick, I know that you make this circus work over there. But I need for my job, I need to understand how you staff and when you have coverage and when you don't. And you'll remember, because I, we provided these documents during the budget process last year. I'll see if I can pull them up quick. If not, I'll send them out. We created schedules with different color shifts showing through the week based on their funding source. So you could see where there is coverage and you could see where the funding came from.
I vaguely remember that, but a lot happens in.
No, 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 I get that. But the benefit is, we spent the time doing this, so it already exists. And what we could do, the reason we did that last year is because Rick added coverage from the revolving fund to, to, to make an adjustment. And so.
So, yeah, the second part of that question is, I'd love to see the current operating structure, how it does. And then like, just what this looks like from a proposed egg, because I was trying to like sketch it out and follow the A, B, C, D on a twenty-four hour cycle. And then it creates this overlap between four and one on a day. So I was, I was like, okay, maybe I'm probably screwing something up here, but I want to see that, because I, on a seven-day week, I end up. Overlapping people on a twenty-four hour cycle.
So how the, how the forty-eight hour cycle worked, if it stopped, if it works on an eight-week cycle. And. People's resources can help build a better, but, but, so they'll work an average of forty-eight hours a week. In that eight-week cycle, they're going to catch a week where they're going to end up actually working three shifts.
Right.
They're going to get paid for forty-eight hours. Because they, they get paid on a, on a two-week cycle. So they'll, and then they'll end up, they'll end up with a week where they only have to work one shift. That week, the way that the pay week works, you know, they'll hit one shift. So in an eight-week cycle, they'll average two shifts, two twenty-four hour shifts a week. But if you looked at it, if you said, looked at it, there was something. The formula doesn't work because you're going to sit and go, wait a minute. And it took me a long time until I actually said, now, one of the guys from Rochester, he goes, chief, the part you're missing is, is that. Some week we work more than forty-eight hours, but you get paid to.
I mean, I think that's what I'm, this, this is a good starting point. I just want to, I want to be able to look at this and also look at, how does the new model, if you were to fit that into this, what does that look like? From an overlay, so I can better understand the whole cycle and what you're trying to ask for.
And so Rick, you can see on the projector what, what we made. It was actually two years ago. But so, so if you're okay with this model, we'll follow the same thing, so it shows what there's. So like right here, I can see that I have a, I have a staff member at the station, and I have two people on call. Here, you know, it's a Sunday, I have a staff person, a staff person, this is during the day. Right. During the week, during the day, I have a staff person, staff person, and the chief. And so over here, you've got the key that shows you've got your salaries, um, you know, the, where the budget lines are coming from. And so what Rick was saying earlier about there would be some budget offset. If, if we have, if we extend, you know, essentially the yellow and the green through twenty-four seven. That eliminates some or all of the need for on-call on a regular basis. And so that's where he was saying that there would be some.
But if I'm correct on that, your yellow and green, you're gonna, what you're gonna end up with is blue extended throughout all of the.
No, with the colors we're looking at here, right now you see green that's just during the day, seven days a week. So this is your full-time hourly line.
Oh, sorry, over to the scale. Yep. Okay, full, sorry, I was seeing salary and just equating salary with full-time hourly.
So what, what you'd see, and, and Rick and I would make it.
All the way across.
A green line all the way across twenty-four, seven, you'll still see this orange line twenty-four, seven, all the way across. And so this splits up, you have some funded from the ambulance revolving fund, which we'd propose to continue full-time being. And some funded from the Perdi budget line. And so essentially you'd see an orange or yellow line twenty-four, seven, and a green line twenty-four, seven. Um, and, and, you know, either a full reduction of the, of the gray lines or a partial reduction. Um, well, yeah, so we'll update this, it's because it's a.
Sorry, back over to the, but if you do a full reduction of the on-call. So now you, you've lost your on-call, your EMS on-call group.
You're right, and that's what Rick was saying, that's where there'd be some budget offset. So he said, you know, there'd be times when maybe a shift, um, didn't get filled, that he might still have some people on call. When he knows it's going to be busy, to know that they're within twenty minutes of the station requirement is. Um, so, but this is an operating budget line which, which could be reduced. I just have two full-time people at the station twenty-four, seven.
Right.
Or two people.
Right, but as we talk about, how do you keep people engaged from that volunteer contingent group? We're, we're actually part, like cutting them out of that equation in a lot of ways.
Rick, it speaks to better than I, but the EMS on-call, the, the purpose of EMS on-call is different than, um, is different than volunteers responding to calls, um, and so.
So how we, what, what seems to, what, what, where is, where is my head, you're right, is that I, I think I'd leave a little bit of money there or at least budget as a dollar. If I needed to use it, you would, some, we use it there, so then we budget probably as we get along. But what, what I kind of envisioned is that people would, we could, if we got rid of you on. We could allow people to sign up to say, hey, I'm not going to be around town like. So if they're on the ambulance or the fire, they sign up, we let a couple of people sign up, if they got a call, they go to call. And potentially two parts of the transfer meeting that maybe one of the full time would actually come back to the station in case we had another call. Therefore, it's, you're, you're allowing a little bit more for them to stay engaged so that they can have some.
So why would you stay with just a dollar? I mean, you, you should have some type of contingency if you're going to generate a, well, a mis, you know. You see where I go.
I do, and I do, and, 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 again, it's hard to dust a crystal ball off. It is, maybe, you know, maybe you would, we'd budget what appears to be a fair number.
See something there that have nothing.
Right. I, I, I agree a hundred percent, but the, 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 the one thing that I need to make sure is that I have, I have a plan in place to keep the people that are doing this engaged.
Understand that too. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, that's. That's my concern is, is that we move to this model and our, our volunteer folks at Mappery. And you're going to lose.
My concern too, and I don't, I don't want to see, like, you know, um, the town lead, um, is starting in September. They're doing a twenty-four hour schedule, seven days, we do people on one full time or with a five, exactly. On what I'm proposing, they, they were able to propose it, they're, um, the chief and I will talk. They're, they're relatively small community, they're relatively small population base. It's tougher to engage people to volunteer. They, they've kind of enforced the, they don't run an ambulance, they go to assist in their.
I can tell you, I know a bunch of people over there and based on what their taxes are doing, they're ready to like, light the pitchforks on fire. Or get pitchforks out, light torches on fire right now.
Yes, my mother was assessment.
Yeah, well, when are you going to pick Christmas?
Yeah, yeah, I have several friends in the, who are like beside themselves with the increase they take.
You know, you know, the other thing we have to think about is that we've already approved some of the, they wouldn't mind the town. That's, so that's not going to be a huge, if we're probably won't be back on the fireside of the lot, but certainly we'll get back from the ends.
Select person, Andrew.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think one of the things that we talked about the cost of doing is we haven't considered cost of not doing it. And I think that cost of not doing it is, is maybe greater than the cost of doing it.
Based on what? What are you using for a data point on that? Because we don't have anything right now.
No, we don't, well.
So to make that statement without data points is.
On a data point, I don't have a data point, I, I, I think what we're talking about is the reduction of our ability to serve. Any day, service, any day, ambulance, fire, as we decrease the number of volunteers determined.
Right, if we were, if we were decreasing it, but I don't think we are in our current capacity. What we're talking about doing is creating, we're talking about guaranteed increase in service. Not a reduction in service.
And Mr. Chair, there, there's a data point in what Rick provided that speaks to the point Mr. Mantrick's making, which is the response time over time versus during the day. And I think part of the, part of the constraint is that going from an average of a two-minute response time during the day and a twelve-minute response time at night is something, is a data point we would expect to improve with the, with the proposed app. So, uh, I, just as an, as an example.
I, in, to, the other thing you have, Mr. Mantrick, the point is that I currently have two people on my EMS staff that are my age or older. They, they typically sign up for four shifts. So that gets me covered, I have ten EMS shifts and four fire shifts that I cover basically. Our thirty, first again, they're one night a week, four weeks a week. The, I would expect the individual that's a little older than I am, that maybe another year, I'm going to lose him. Uh, I have the other gentleman that's about my age, um, he's an engineer, he makes a lot of money. With engineering stuff that he does, he has my stuff, he just enjoys the stuff. But at some point he's with the site, but he doesn't enjoy getting up to a bug and chasing someone. That's my big fear is that, that the problem is today is if you lost one of the volunteers. Twenty-five years ago, there was four people waiting in your place. If I lose two, all the members of volunteers today, there's no guarantee that anybody's standing. You want to take one of them, that's.
I, I don't disagree, we have to find a path forward. I'm just, I'm trying to make sure that I understand all of the components that go into this because that hundred and fifty-nine, I think, is going to be a well number in the grand sum.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I, the, the cost, cost people, the cost, people that are eighty, settlement budgets, people, and that won't go down. I, I agree with you a hundred percent. You guys talked about it tonight, when you wrestle with possible increases and step increases of, I don't think anybody's here from this table who would broaden their opinion of where you need to be. But the problem is is that at the end of the day, to balance the ability for the taxpayers to pay for the services that they expect. Something comes as a hard bill. And, uh, again, so I, I hope to pay taxes here, if we engage with a fire chief or not, is that, you know, you have no effect. Tire and stuff, but I think that actually years will present a budget in front of you. But it's that, it's important to be, to make sure that I'm taking care of the tax dollars that a young couple is spending and the people who fix their, they don't have to spend for life services. And, and, and again, I'm committed to stay that, stay that path. What we, what the five of you have to alone themselves, I believe, is to pay where, where's the spot here where we can, we can accept that here's a necessary.
So everybody think how we're going to get back into a pair of thirty-twos.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on this or should we thoroughly meet this much?
I think so, I think we can wait and see what is, what is.
Rick and I'll do some homework and we'll, we'll print some numbers. Uh, Rick's got a placeholder he'll use in his budget development, um, and I, I think we've got some good information to work with.
I have a question, it's a question.
Yeah, thirty, thirty-twos, remember, skinny jeans.
You said, you said you wanted to actually the nineteen's.
No, I wanted to be eighteen's, so I'm going to be thinking, going to be needy.
That's why I want you to make sure you're here so you can pay your share.
Although I did see, I did see nineteen's when I got elected, when I left, I wanted nineteen's, but you know what? Let's shoot for eighteen's and come in, uh, better than expected. So I'm in, let's do it, seventeen's, you heard it from Rick. Uh, Pierce Road improvements. Pierce Road, class five road, um, had been paved at one point by the prior owner. Um, they were looking at gravelling it, the current owner of the property would like to turn it back into an asphalt road. Select person, air.
Just that section, yes.
Yes, the four to five hundred feet.
Yes.
Select person, air, you had your hand up and then, uh.
It says right here, the property owner is a paver.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Yeah.
Yes, he is, the individual who owns it is a paver.
Well, the, uh. Only my concern is, uh, the, I feel a raise, and some basically need to work, they look at, and is he qualified enough to have enough action?
The two questions I asked our road agent and, uh, Mark felt that it was, uh, he would oversee the project and he felt that, uh, it would be, it would be a job well done. And as long as the pavement was blended down into the gravel section, so the gravel could become up over, it would be better for the town's equipment, um, than the existing condition or the proposed gravel. Um, he's on the call and can speak to it if you, if you'd like to hear it from him. But those are the two questions I asked him, and he said as long as he oversaw the project.
I didn't, I didn't realize I paid with that now.
So recently sold.
The, the one area of concern I have is we have a contracted agreement with a paver already to do work in town. And although we did not spec or bid this work with that paver, now we're taking like a, a, a piece of town road and subbing it out to a person who potentially is not the paver. We have an agreed contract with to do our paving that we contract out. He's doing, do it for free, I, I understand that.
That's why, oh, nothing's free.
Now acquire a bond.
But, uh, basically, I'm just worried about, if he doesn't substantial, it costs us money, it's at all.
And that's why it's before the board, and that's why it's your decision to make. Um, he, he's offered, Mark supports it, um, and, uh, if, if you'd like to proceed, we can. If you'd like to proceed with conditions, we can bring those back to the property owner.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Um, if, if Mark's on, he may know, maybe able to speak to it, Mark, if you want to meet yourself.
There?
Okay, what, what was the question?
I can see the blue dot lighting up, but I can't hear you. One second.
Can anybody hear me now?
Now we can, go ahead, Mark, thanks.
Okay, what was the question?
What was the question?
The qualifications of the paver, Mark, or, uh, select person, air was concerned if they had equipment to get satisfactory compaction.
Yes, he's told me he's going to, he's going to. A, a, a vibrator roller, and he has a, uh, a basically a powered by, uh, by a diesel paver box that he will be pulling the strips with, so I am not concerned about compaction.
I'm sorry, Mark, I just had a really hard time hearing you and I missed half of what you said. Could you repeat that?
My phone here.
I think the only part we missed is, did you say he's going to rent a vibratory compactor?
Yes, he's going to rent a, a two and a half ton vibratory compactor, actor.
Two and a half ton vibratory compactor.
Yeah, that, with, with, with the vibrator is going, it's the equivalent of about five or six tons, six ton.
Chinese five, eight.
So you don't have concern about the, that equipment being able to, to adequately pave that section to a satisfactory condition?
No, we used to do it all the time with the exact same equipment.
There's a question about a bond, Mark, uh, I, I assume during the construction process, um, not continuing. Do, do you have concerns, so the purpose of a bond would be to protect the town if the project went south, south mid-project? So the cost to return the road to gravel conditioner otherwise would be covered. Uh, do you share that concern? Uh, and if you do, what, what would you want to see for a bond? Um, worst case scenario, what it would cost the town to, to either finish or fix the project?
Well, the reason we told you about in the first place is I was going to, to basically take up the asphalt that was on that road because it's just getting too difficult to plow over. Uh, it's, it's, than if it was just gravel, I was going to remove it. Uh, then I met this gentleman, purchased the old dire property, both sides of the road. And I, my intentions to make it back into gravel, that's when he approached me, paving. So it was just going to go back to gravel anyway, if, if I was left, uh, to my normal lines with it, but he's offering to pave it. So as far as a bond is concerned, I don't see that it's necessary, but that's your choice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, would you just be paving over the existing asphalt?
No, we'd be, we would be ripping out the existing asphalt and, and doing upgrade.
And then he would come in after and pave it?
Yes.
Okay, is it, or, or the option is rip out the existing gra- gravel or asphalt? You're going to upgrade it and then you would just leave it as is and it would be like the rest of Pierce Road?
Correct.
Okay. What is the appetite of the board on this one?
Like to make a motion to approve the payment for this, uh, for four to five hundred feet of it.
Yeah.
We, it's just going to go back to gravel? And we have somebody willing.
I can vote. I have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion from the board?
I think we're really hanging ourselves up. I call that.
Yeah, I'm not really in love with the idea myself.
Well, I mean. They.
It's nice to have.
What, what's the worst case if, if, if it's paved improperly or, or the, the job comes out poor?
Mark has to reclaim it again at our cost?
Four to five hundred feet, probably with a skin steer to pump up the asphalt and the gravel underneath would be somewhat decent. My, my eyes, I don't know if that's, if Mark can weigh in on that, but.
Okay, Dan, what's, what's your take? I, I tend to lean toward you on things like this.
Well. I, I don't, I don't know if it's a road agent, but he hasn't rented the equipment, the roll ones up, I think. It's kind of scary, not even for, and I, I'm on that side, I don't, it's the first time I heard about it, I should, I should. I'm going to check it out, I'm going to check, was the brave fighting versus qualified or not. Um, because there's a lot of bad babies going around town and stuff, and perfect size, he's saying all over driveway. Not compacted, uh, maybe postponed. Lot of bad work going around. So you're not, I don't, I don't want to be stuck out of that, be stuck with it.
I would like to retract my.
Well, you leave your motion up, we can just vote on it, it means we're not in favor, we're not in favor of.
Well, now I'm not in favor of my motion, because, because no, no, and Dan, Dan serves a hell of a purpose on this board. Um, and, you know, I would like to give, I would like to allow team, uh, Dan. Um, and you know, I would like to give, I would like to allow team uh Dan to have time to go and talk with the individual, look at the equipment.
You know, I just.
That's, you know. So.
Um, I've got some observations.
Well, I mean, if you check it out, you you would feel more comfortable about it.
I I I just not really looking at markets. I don't want to. It's not my job to deal with them. I'll deal with the road agent.
I guess my take on it is is if the homeowner is comfortable doing it, I'm willing to kind of stick my neck out there and let him go, but I really would want to. I I would want a bond on it. That way, if if it came out in a crummy manner and we had to recover it, I would want to know that at least if we're recovering it twice, second time, we're getting paid back for recovering it.
So it sounds like we want a bond in the amount of what it would cost to reclaim the town.
Right.
One time.
One time.
I like that.
That would be.
And actually, if you think about it. How it was gonna do anyway, prep it, have a budget.
So we'll know exactly what it should cost to reclaim it the first time.
Right. I guess my only feedback would be that we're we're going through the process of calling the bond right now. It's not. It's not free money. The scope, the size of this project, we will risk more in legal fees trying to call the bond.
Cash, make a cash one.
Then uh, well, but I think the purpose is if it fails, and so I I don't think they're gonna put up enough cash to just sit in escrow for five years, ten years. Mark, if if you could just spitball man hours, how much, I mean, we only uh, we can use FEMA rates for the budget. How much time would it take? Is it going to take you to pull up that pavement and grade it?
Probably a good day to pull it up and a half a day to grade it.
So days, yeah, two days, day and a half, day and a half is worth of work.
Say two days.
Two days.
Two days labor plus our equipment. Select person air.
Right. We don't. We have equipment. There's a cost to that equipment.
That's to use FEMA rates. Because we don't have, we don't have a direct cost that we could use. So the select board's highway billing policy is to use the FEMA rates, which calculate each year, they calculate rates for each piece of equipment and they've got list pages and pages long.
I know. We uh I was in the start.
Oh, sorry.
He said, we have equipment. There is a cost to it.
Right.
Okay. So is there an appetite to move forward with this?
You have a motion, a second.
Well, no, select person Sakosha retracted his motion. It is not. So now the so now the second has been retracted.
I think we can get more information.
All right, um, so motion to table.
Table till next meeting. Move it to all business.
So I'll make the motion to table until the next meeting, move it to all business. Seconded by select person Mantra, roll call vote.
There I.
I agree.
Sakosha.
Not by.
Is there specific information the board's expecting Mark and I to bring back? So select person air would like to connect with Mark for further discussion. And come back prepared to make a proposal to the board on if it's something we think we should capably move forward with or just accept it being reclaimed to gravel and it's just like the rest of the world.
Dan will talk to Mark. No specific questions the board wants to.
Select person Bailey, do you have specific questions?
I just have, I just think. If we're gonna have that piece of the road done, we need to turn around and deal with uh, you know, we're looking at two and a half days. Are you gonna be able to finish that two and a half days or is it gonna please me a two days? I I misunderstood that. So it's two days. Is he gonna be able to finish it in two days?
Yes, because he said, he said a day and a half that we gave him to. So he should have that.
He is, then he's, then he should know the standards and then the Mark should double check with him and say, this is our standards that we need. And if it's if it's not, I'm not trying to tell Mark how to do his job, but I'm saying. But I'm I'm on the fence. I'm on the fence of approving this here with that. And I really, you know.
I'll make observation. That's that's I'll give my honest opinion.
Okay.
I think the big thing is making sure the individual understands what our paving standards are. And that it's not done to a subpar standard, even though it's only a four to five hundred foot stretch.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess my, the comparison I would make is to the gentleman on Swang Room, who is looking to do the geotextiles and naked improvement to Swang Room. And the the question before the select board was, are you willing to allow this gentleman to make an improvement? It will be better than its existing condition. It won't be twenty feet wide. It won't be the town's road standard. But make it an improvement to Swang Road that would make it better than it is now. Now, that project was sidetracked. Unfortunately, the gentleman had a fire on his property and priorities changed a little bit, but the last conversation we had with him, he's still interested in doing it, but maybe on a different timeline. But I I would look at this differently. I asked Mark the same questions. Would this be better than if it than what it is now? Absolutely was the answer. Would it be better than the just gravel? He said, yes, absolutely. Do you have any concerns with with the quality of work? And you know, Mark's answer was, I'm going to monitor the quality of work, you know, paving contractor for forty years. On site, making sure things are done right. It's blended right. So we'll we'll come back at the next meeting. Dan can chat with Mark. Uh, and and we'll be on the agenda for whether.
Excellent. But but it's it's still, we're gonna assume the liability while he's doing the work. Are we willing to do that?
We accept the liability regularly, um, select person Bailey, when when improvements are made to classics roads, um, consistent with the requirements of building environment.
I'm sure. He provided insurance during while he's working. I like I give you. Right, I drop you, George, I give you moving chairs.
I'll wait. I'll wait till the next presentation.
All right, great. Nick, next item on here is the new library proposal update. I will let Connor discuss that and I'm going to turn the meeting over to select person Sakosha while I.
Um, great. Well, it actually looks like we have our esteemed library director and the current chair of the library trustees on. Um, so it, I guess I'll check. And Melissa or Lindsay, are are you interested in speaking to this topic or would you like me to read through um the comment that was submitted?
Can you hear me, Connor? It's Lindsay.
Yes.
Um, no, I don't think Melissa and I were prepared to. So you can definitely just share the comments that we sent in.
Yeah.
If anybody has any questions, obviously, I can speak to it after.
Okay, super. Uh, well, thank you. So I won't, I won't read the comment that was submitted, but share the information. So the uh library trustees have been meeting um regularly evaluating what's right for the community, what the needs of the library are. Uh, the library trustees have held a special meeting on June ninth. Um, and at that meeting, they made a couple of decisions that they felt it was important to update the board and community on. Um, one of those decisions um that they voted on unanimously, unanimous agreement uh was to reduce the scope of the project and reduce the size of the building. Um, I understand that there something that moved up their priority list uh was to design a project that meets the needs um that have changed over the last two years with the COVID pandemic and otherwise, what the what purpose the library has served in the community and the needs that have presented themselves. Uh, and additionally, the the other big item that they decided is that they plan to bring the next proposal forward to voters uh for the March twenty twenty three town meeting. Uh, and so that uh that timeline uh is important for consideration for the select board and the community. Otherwise, it will certainly be a uh thoughtful and deliberative process between now and then. Uh, but valuable information to share. Uh, they also intend to continue working with S and P, community leaders, the staff, library, et cetera. So uh, one thing that they that they do expect to bring forward, this will be part of the twenty twenty two budget request uh is asking for an additional contribution to the library community center capital reserve, which was established last year with twenty five thousand seed money. Um, so they they do expect to to keep the library um topic alive and before voters through town meeting season this year. Uh, but they're requesting adds funding to that. Um, so uh, as you heard from Lindsay, she's available to answer any questions if you haven't have any, but really the purpose was to share that information with the board.
Connor, just share any questions with the library. So just ask some questions. So questions. Um, so we're on to tricentennial expendable trust fund.
Tricentennial expendable trust fund authorization. Rick, would you like to come on up again?
We are blessed.
Two times.
Three, three times. Is that what you're calling? Where's your church? That's your bless?
I mean, now I know why the meeting is gonna run so long.
Well, at least I stacked them all into one meeting. I mean, you know. I said, Rick, you gotta.
All in one, yeah. You don't have football interfere.
We've got to call out.
So you wanted to get it out before.
I don't know how I keep update on the score now.
He wants to get out before he retires so he can pay for it.
So um, what I'm here to ask for, if you saw a picture of the plate, uh, the committee worked judiciously to uh come up with a plate design that uh people will like. Um, still haven't got word back from the state of New Hampshire on the approval to do it. I don't see that be a problem, but we, as a committee, agreed that we weren't gonna order anything. We got a go ahead from the state. Um, typically how this works is the state will give us a writing, direct, be able to give us a writing written permission to be able, the residents of Barrington to have this plate and follow their vehicle, both vehicles for one year. Um, and by anticipation, we as every single one of these plates that we sell will have a note in there or a letter in there for the recipient. So if a police officer stops them, it's a major front plate. I have. We don't have that. What I would like to do is a few functional allows to expend twenty three hundred dollars out of.
How many about twenty three hundred dollars?
Five hundred.
We anticipate, what would be the cost per individual weight?
We haven't said that yet. The price point will be somewhere between fifty and twenty bucks.
Fifty and twenty bucks to twenty to fifty dollars?
So fifteen to.
Oh, fifteen to twenty, okay. To to earn yourself the pleasure of being uh pulled over by any police forces finest to have a discussion with your letter of the plate? Sorry, I'm just. It was too easy. I had to ask the question.
I don't.
Well, not every state. It would be pursuant to your state's requirement.
Some states don't require front plate.
Yeah, not all states required plates, but again, that would be a better question. We should have asked that. With having that letter.
Do you know why?
Well, we're gonna have, the plate's gonna be shrink wrapped. They they simply shrink it for another ten cents and we thought that made perfect sense because I do believe people will buy them and never put them over the front. They can't, they'll buy them as a.
Right. I will be. Yeah.
I'll make a motion. Spend it.
So I want three.
All right.
Air eye.
Family eye.
Sakosha. Not by.
Thank you.
The option to get pulled over.
We just wait all five.
I have, he put me down.
George is my freedom.
Dan, you've got like twelve registered vehicles in the town of Barrington. You're gonna buy one? Shoot the bark off the wall and. Let the bogs out.
I only own one.
This is not the personality.
D Air Industrial Supply Incorporated and whatever other expenditure that name exists.
Yesterday.
Just don't care.
Should uh should be should be part of it.
All right. No, my Christmas gift, Dan's gonna be.
Select. Select board reports. Select person air.
I don't have misdemeanor. I don't think I know that.
Select person Mantra.
Uh, school board that uh.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yes, thank you. I was there. Uh, for the, I think of significance. Significance, they're still hiring a couple of people. There's no change in the uh lunch prices number zero.
Getting pretty.
Yeah.
George, stay out of the school.
Kayla's had good applesauce.
And and the teacher workshop is the thirtieth of August and the students come in on Wednesday and first September.
And they sent out a very lovely letter for uh all the the kiddos that are starting up here at ECLC and other places, I believe. I uh I know myself and several of our friends in town received the letters.
Congratulations.
It's about the upcoming school year.
The uh, the budget committee is going to have an organization meeting on the seventh, September. Uh, the transportation may be not be.
Well, I'm expecting you guys to recycle more and drive the costs down that place. Select person Bailey.
Thank you very much. I missed the uh CBA meetings because of health issues and the other part that Connor and the library trustee just gave, gave my report as to how I was going to get it. I will say that I really think we should uh continue, but that's not my choice anyway. So that's my report.
Uh, what's going on on the rack is they're finishing up summer camps. And they're getting the wheel in motion on the gym floor. And some of the proposed projects that they brought to us, they're starting to get underway.
Why do they do gym floors?
Uh, I was not at the planning board meet meeting this past Tuesday. Um, prior to that meeting, I did have a meeting with Connor with the school board chair as well as the um superintendent. We did, we had discussions about the joint um deliberative session and uh, my general takeaway, it was going back before the board, but it didn't seem like there was a huge appetite to do it deliberative on the same date. And uh, we had some discussion in general on the um position that they're looking to fill and our response about funding on that. Uh, which really there wasn't a whole, that that seemed to be the the minor part of our meeting more than anything. Overall, just uh, just general kind of progress of town and school and um, their desire to try and work toward a relatively flat budget as well and keep doing what we can to keep the cost to the taxpayers as low and affordable as possible. The only other item that I had, we did not have a technology committee meeting. That was this, that's tomorrow, I believe. And yeah, uh, pleasantly surprised to see the town hall uh being cleared. So nice to see some forward progress there. And just so everyone was aware, the next meeting, I will actually not be there or I will be traveling uh, on Monday, the twenty third.
So. Who's on the agenda? Oh, yeah. Any president things? I know table.
Yes, the board has tabled a couple of things. Um, the as of right now, you're going to have a presentation on the twenty twenty financial audit, which is not pressing for the twenty third. Uh, the police department uh will be presenting a proposal for a staffing objective that they'd like to accomplish. Uh, similar to uh the the fire chiefs tonight. Uh, and I also hope to have a uh proposal for you regarding the building inspector's vehicle, uh, which needs to be replaced. It's in its twelve year of a ten year deal and um.
You squeeze fifteen.
Yeah, you know, so uh, we're crunching some numbers on that. So uh, and then items that we.
and then items that we tabled.
Then we're not meeting, you know, September, September is a late day weekend. So what the next meeting?
No, we don't. The next scheduled meeting is September thirteenth.
No, it's August twenty-third.
Nope, not the one after that.
Can we push it right now?
It's a long run. And I'm gonna hear me object. No, I, I think that that's a, I think that that's a kind of a stretch for if you were gonna do.
What are we doing next week?
You could do the thirtieth.
I was gonna say, knowing that there's the potential of two of us being out that way.
Are we doing it next week?
Wouldn't.
So we could do something next week.
Back them up together.
We're pushing it to the thirtieth. I mean, cause I would be back.
Yep. For the board, I mean, yeah, I think the thirtieth could work, but are, do you, would you have trouble attending on the twenty-third, Dan?
I'm, I can't.
No, there's two other people here. I'm thinking, not me.
Are you talking about me?
I won't be able to make it on on the twenty-third.
Will or won't?
I will. I, I will make it on the twenty-third. I can't make it, man. Right, sorry.
But I plan to attend the meeting on the twenty-third, either in person or, or virtual.
Alright.
I'll be here on the twenty-third.
No, I feel like that's new information.
That's reorganized.
You're gonna do a lot of dropping.
Okay. So are we gonna meet the twenty-third? That's our rightest scheduled meeting?
I'm just throwing it out there. To make it more convenient for everyone.
I'm gonna be in the happiest place, so it doesn't.
Just keep smiling.
No mosquitoes.
Right, right.
Watch out for alligators.
Yeah.
Um, no. I'd say we keep it to the twenty-third, business usual. People have already made some changes to arrangements. So I mean, Andy's not gonna be here. I'll, I'll be here. I think I can handle another meeting this year, so.
Two in one year.
Yeah. Comments coming up.
Rick, are you going?
Public comment.
Yeah, hey, public comment, Rick.
Closing the door is cold.
Yeah.
All right. Meeting stays on the twenty-third. Final public comment. If you're participating remotely, you'd like to make a public comment, you can raise your hand, unmute yourself and speak up. Would you like to make a public comment? Yep, here, I'll turn the microphone on for you.
How much salary do you get?
Okay, I'm Mike House from Forty-Eighth Avenue Way, and I have a question, probably more for Connor than for the board. Do you have a, an item for the next sort of board meeting for two-way tactical to be addressing the board?
No.
You do not?
I expect the two-way tactical to be visiting the zoning board.
Which is not meeting this month, are they?
No, so the zoning board, so the planning board and zoning board, to get on the agenda for the planning board and zoning board, you have to submit requests. Uh, it's six weeks statutory requirement for notices. And so the notice is passed for the meeting of this month. There's actually nothing on the agenda for this month. Um, the notice deadline or the submission deadline for the September fifteenth, I believe is that Wednesday meeting, um, is later this month. Um, and so I expect that, that they'll have a variance application before the zoning board on the September fifteenth zoning board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
That's all I need.
Sure thing. So if there's any other.
Public comments?
Trying to make a public comment remotely, raise your hand, unmute yourself, star six. I see that. Give it fifteen more seconds. Uh, for anybody looking for updated information about the town hall lot, barrenton.nh.gov forward slash town hall um, has all the updates, including a, at least one picture from the clearing today. Anything else coming through? No. Then I will close public comment at this time. And I would like to make a motion to go into non-public for the purposes of personnel reputation and legal.
I will say.
We'll call vote.
Bailey eye.
It's coach side.
Now bye. All right. Good, cause I don't.
Would you please?
Welcome back to the public section of our meeting and so town administrator MacGyver would like to make some announcements about.
So in non-public, the select board considered the details of issuing deed waivers and chose to issue deed waivers to four property owners, five properties. The properties are map 17 lot 22 sub lot M, lot 22 or map 22 lot 17, map 249 lot 2 and 249 1 and map 18 lot 12.
Just for my own send, can you say map 17 lot 12 sub lot M because I heard map 17 lot 17.
Yeah, so there's map 17 lot 22 sub lot M and then map 22 lot 17.
Okay, because I have just for my own send, yeah, I have map 17 lot 12 sub lot M.
Oh, oh, that's 22. Yes, I appreciate that. Map 17 lot 12 sub lot M and then map 22 lot 17. Thank you.
I would like to take a motion to seal the non-public limits for the remainder of them. Yes, I'll second that motion. Roll call vote.
I'd like to add it to it's saying definitely.
Definitely agree. And motion to adjourn.
I will second.
I'm staying.
No.
Actually, the chairman and major agree.
We have a vote.
Aye.
Aye, there we go. We got three. I don't care. Everyone have a wonderful evening.
Beautiful.